This is the pre-meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, June 24th. Please stand for the invocation led by Pastor Tony Legere, Public Safety Chaplain, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, everyone. What a joy it is to represent the Mobile Police Department this morning, strong and resolute, and an honor to serve you today. Let's pray. Father, we give thanks to you for a wonderful, beautiful day, just another day where we're mindful, Lord, of our smallness and our dependence upon you. And so we humbly wait and say, Spirit of God, would you breathe your breath upon us? We pray for our country particularly today, Lord, as the battles are raging, and pray that you bless our president and those who counsel him and our government today. Even as we pray the same for our own city gates and our leaders, we pray your word be clear. May we lead in such a way that honors you and builds people. We pray this in the strong name of Christ. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Daves.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everybody this morning. Welcome to our council meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones, please at this time put on the off or the vibrate position, the off or the vibrate position. Any person that is desiring to address the Mobile City Council must sign in indicating the resolution ordinance of public hearing agenda before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Any person that is desiring to speak to the council on the non-agenda item and would like to address the council must contact the city clerk office no later than two o'clock PM the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the Mobile City Council must be identified and pertaining to the city of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given a proper note to the city clerk office and wish to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there will be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who recognizes any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of June 17th.
So moved.
Second.
Proper move and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? General approve.
Communications from Mayor Simpson.
Good morning. It's good to see you. Thanks for being here today. I have several announcements. One is that last week I had the opportunity to represent the city of Mobile at the Paris Air Show. I'd say that it was a very productive trip. If you go back to 2009, there were very few people that attended that air show that really knew anything about the city of Mobile. They certainly didn't know where it was and they didn't know what our capability was. But today, we're on our way to being the fourth largest producer of commercial aircraft in the world, which is amazing, which is behind Toulouse, France, Hamburg, Germany, and Seattle, Washington. Currently, Airbus has about 30 suppliers. Several are in this, well, there are more suppliers than that, but 30 that we're kind of focusing on. Several who are already in this area. The meetings that I personally attended, there was a lot of interest about companies making capital investments in the city as well as hiring additional personnel. There's a strong interest in Mobile, not just because of what Airbus is doing, obviously is the magnet, but it's also what we're doing in the area of workforce development and how we are supporting business and industry as it comes in to support Airbus. Future's very, very bright in aviation. The only kind of caution flag that was out there had to do with tariffs. And there's no way that, at this point in time, I think that you can predict what the tariffs will, how they will impact Airbus, but it would be probably from a negative standpoint. And so Airbus has contingency plans depending on which way the tariffs fall and how much they are of what they will do. But that aside, I'd say that everything is going great guns for the future of Airbus and aviation in Mobile. The Mobile Chamber of Commerce, the Airport Authority, Governor Ivy's team, and Team Alabama all made this trip, and we all participated in selling Mobile and what we can do. Today is really a big, big day from my perspective in the city of Mobile. Several years ago, baseball outfielder Cleon Jones played on the 1969 Miracle Mets, came and made a presentation about what we should do to honor our baseball Hall of Famers. So today, we will actually have Billy Williams, who is one of those Hall of Famers, along with Robert Brazil, and several members of the families, Satchel Paige, Ozzie Smith, Willie McCovey will also be here. Mrs. Aaron had planned to be here, but because of the death in the family, she won't be joining us. But it gives us an opportunity to really honor the legacy of all of these athletes. And when you read their stories, it's truly, they're individually truly amazing. The public-facing part of this will be at 1:30 in front of the Convention Center. If you've not walked out in that area, I suggest that you do it. These statues, the artist Brett Grill did an unbelievable job of capturing the different, I'll say even the personalities of the players. If you look at the Satchel Paige statue, his leg thrown up in there like he would pitch, it's just amazing that he was able to capture all that. Anyway, we're going to celebrate that here shortly and celebrate what I would say is Mobile's unraveled sports heritage. You've heard it said before, but Mobile has more baseball Hall of Famers per capita than any city in the United States. So, pretty amazing. Another item is that we recently saw where Wallet Hub had ranked Mobile as the 24th best-run city in the United States, which is a great honor to be recognized for the things that we're doing. They base this on long-term debt, fiscal management, public services, and other factors. And as you know, we've prioritized strong financial management and high-quality public services ever since I've been the mayor. But it really reflects, from my perspective, the hard work of the city employees as well as the city council. The mayor really can do nothing without the collaboration and partnership with the city council, but it really comes down to the city employees, you know, making things happen. So tremendously grateful of them, so we share that, share this honor with them. Some other things that were in that study that we have no control over, but also reflect upon the outcome had to do with education, healthcare, and the economy. So we're grateful by partners in those fields, education, healthcare, and economic development, for what they've done to afford us that recognition. Now, at this time, I'd like to call on Chief Jackson to present the Officer of the Month, Tiffany Monti. So, Chief Jackson?
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor. Staff, council, having here today. I'd like to present to you Corporal Tiffany Monti. Corporal Monti is the May Officer of the Month. She is the supervisor, recently promoted supervisor of the crime detail of the 4th Precinct. This detail tracks down the non-criminals, the wanted subjects, and puts cases to a resolve. However, recently, they lost a few investigators that went to different assignments, so she stepped up and took over an investigative role as well. And in the month of May, she was assigned 20 cases and had a 71% clearance rate on those cases. Executed numerous search warrants and recovered over $28,000 worth of stolen property, leading to 25 felony arrests. Tiffany is an extreme contributor to the reduction of crime in the 4th Precinct, and that's why she's being honored today as our Officer of the Month. Thank you.
Congratulations to you.
At this time, Chief Mars will introduce the Firefighter of the Month, Brian Pritchard.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff, council, president, council. Mobile Fire Rescue Department is pleased to present the Firefighter of the Month for the month of May. He's a fire service driver, Brian Pritchard. And as you can see, he brought his family with him, wife Whitney, Caroline, we call her sis, she goes by sis in Paxton. And I told them to come up because that epitomized what the fire department is all about. We're about a family. And he brought his to show that he has a strong background. Brian is a driver at a hazmat unit with interstate, big major interstates that we have and chemical companies and all the dangerous stuff we have in the city of Mobile. He's number-one expert in mitigating those emergencies for us. And so we're happy to please. It's been almost 10 years. He's a driver a couple of years ago. We promoted him to drive a couple of years ago. Brian, again, he shows, he shows at work every day, not a problem. He mentors the younger firefighters that we have. He's a leader among men and women, and we just wanted to highlight him because he's doing it the right way. And he has that servant's heart, always talks about it. And you can see, he's sharing this, this award with his family. So I present to you Firefighter of the Month for Mobile Fire Rescue, Brian Pritchard. And his family.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations to you.
Mr. President, that concludes my remarks. And as I indicated earlier, I may slip out a little earlier because of the ceremony.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Madam Clerk?
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Proper move and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda's adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for waivers of the noise ordinance at Tricentennial Park on July 6th, on Carlisle Drive on June 28th, and on Burtonwood Drive on July 4th and 7th.
So moved.
Second.
Proper move and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Nina Dorch.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Nina Dorch. I stand before you today not just as a citizen of Mobile, but as a professional with over two decades of experience in HR recruitment and workforce development, someone that's deeply passionate about the future of the city and its people. We've recently come together as a community in the wake of rising gun violence. We've had meetings. We've held forums. We've mourned with the families that have been victims. But now we must shift from awareness to action. I want to present one clear impactful solution, a city-led workforce development department. Currently, Mobile gives to strong organizations like Swatting, Mayo, Saudi Sea, and the Chamber of Commerce. But these organizations are doing great work, but without a centralized, city-led strategy, we're missing the connection that could tie it all together. We have puzzle pieces, but not enough hands putting them in place. I've recently had a meeting with city personnel and understand that some things are being done, but all I'm saying is that more can be done. This is our time to send a clear community message that we want all of our citizens to have access to the jobs that we keep talking about, the ones coming to Mobile, the ones that are here with Mobile, and the industries that are moving in. Consider this. Louisville, Kentucky created a Department of Youth Transition and Workforce Development. They saw a measurable drop in youth crime by investing in mentorship and job pathways. Charlotte, North Carolina built a workforce and business development department that helped reduce repeat offenses by aligning employer partnerships with training for people re-entering into society. Wichita, Kansas allocated $10 million in ARPA funds for workforce and small business development, injecting hope and opportunity directly into their neighborhoods that needed it most. Mobile, meanwhile, does not host a public city-sponsored college and career fair. That is a missed opportunity, especially when we have the largest public school system in the entire state and now almost 200,000 residents, making us the fourth-largest city in Alabama, which we all know. Our young people in our entire community need to see what's possible right here. And here's the reality. Violence is often a reflection of a lack of opportunity. When purpose is absent, pain fills that gap. And when no doors are open, trust me, we all know, some will choose to break windows. According to Alabama Possible, Alabama is the seventh poorest state in the nation. In Mobile, despite our booming manufacturing sector, we still face a stark skills gap that forces employers to recruit outside of our region.
Yeah. We've got one more minute.
Ballin County, just across the Bay Shore, with higher prosperity index, yet we have more students, more companies, and more potential. Why the gap? Because we aren't investing in a true pipeline, not enough. Young people believe they have to leave Mobile to succeed, but the truth, the jobs are here. Engineers, welders, IT professionals, linemen, nurses, roles we should be filling locally with our own talent. We don't just need to reinvent the wheel. We need to centralize and coordinate our efforts. A workforce development office in our city could lead to career awareness campaigns year-round, support local hiring initiative across industries. And all I want to do is personally just tell you that we need to move forward with intention. Let's create a position, or better yet, a Department of Workforce Development to unify our efforts and focus on the city's influence where it matters the most, where it should matter the most to its people. Opportunity is prevention. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Dorch. Thank you even for coming down. Some of the ideas that you had, was talking about and was expressing also came through my thoughts, my head, you know, months ago, some things that the city could be doing and leading the charge. But my question is to you on this morning, who did you, you said you spoke to a city administrator of, who was it? What department?
I did. Last Monday, well, the Monday before last, Archeneek Key called me from the city, and so I did have time to sit down with Archeneek on Monday.
Okay. All right. You know, the questions coming from this council. Thank you so much. Mr. Penn?
Well, thank you, Ms. Dorch, for coming down. Man, I received your email as well and look forward to having a conversation. Some of the things, you know, me and the mayor kind of talked about some things earlier. I think as a city, we all can figure out what things that we can do to get better, and that's the goal. And hearing some of the things and ideas, I don't think the administration or the council is figuring out ways that we can support initiatives that you talked about today, you know. And that's something that, the reason why we did the Community Career Fair that we have coming up June 28th. So I want to thank Mr. Lasky for helping me with that. But those ideas came from constituents, talking about things that you stated that you would like to see in the community. And I think it's collaboration. So what ways that we can work together, I look forward to setting up a meeting so we can find out different ways that we can move forward together. So thank you so much for coming down and sharing your ideas.
Thank you.
Reggie Hill regarding resolutions 01-848, 21-861, 60-882, and 01-883.
Thank you, Madam Assistant City Clerk. To the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill is my name. I rise today to continue these pertinent conversations regarding city business. Let's begin, please, with 01-848. This is the $200,000 for the unarmed guard services at various city facilities. We can just have some clarity. They're going to be supporting existing services from MPD, or these are separate services that are going to be rendered at these places, and the specifics on where these will be. It's a little difficult when we click online. Some of that information is not available, so if we can just have that provided, it'd be greatly appreciated. Let's move, please, to 21-861. This is similar to 21-862, which is for 1.1 million dollars, but the 861 is for 3.3 million dollars. And I believe we have a very competent city engineer, and Mr. Amberger went on about this morning about what he believes they would like to get an opportunity to go forth with. However, I, and I believe many other Mobileans would agree, if we polled the city, we would rather see this level of investment go towards drainage. This is something that the gentleman from District 4 has began expressing at these meetings, in which the not-so-pretty projects, we need to be focused, our concentration on those. And I think we see a difference in the city if we lean towards doing that. Let's move, please, to 60-881, excuse me, 60-882. In 2021, Success for the Future was approved for discretionary expenditure. That still has not been received. I'm just wanting to reiterate this piece about where organizations have said there have been delays for certain resources being divvied out. And so we would like to make sure that there's nothing that's going to prevent this, because we see where organizations actually have plans and things that work. If there's something that's hindering them from going forward, we shouldn't be surprised with what we see in our community. If we would, please, lastly, let's, let's, let's take a dive at this 01-883. And this is the 1.5 million dollars with the A1 McDuffie Sanitation LLC. And if I'm not mistaken, this group is out of Sims, Alabama. And so a lot of us will recall, in 2023, the annexation was adopted. And then while many people came down to this podium to express that we didn't have necessarily the resources in place to service our own existing city limits, to me, and I can stand to be corrected, this appears that we've had to push out more money for services that should have went through the Public Works Department. And so if my calculation is properly, in these three calendar years, that's already 4.5 million dollars. We're saying we're going to do another set of 4.5 million dollars to extend through 2026. So I would just like to urge you all to find ways in which we could bring this back to in-house. I'm not a fan of privatizing these resources when we have these existing departments. And I believe we have very competent leaders who head these departments. Their supervisors may force them to make decisions that I don't always agree with, but that does not speak anything to their intelligence. So if we can just look at that, because there's plenty that we can be doing with the 1.5 million dollars. We've got like 402K for vehicles today. Just imagine, we can just get the additional equipment to go towards public works. Thank you for being on the floor.
Ordinances held over. 64-031, consider the proposed modification of a previously-approved planned unit development for property located at the east terminus of Light and Place Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Proper move and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item pass.
CIP resolution is held over. 08-846, approved purchaser to Musco Sports Lighting for new lighting at West Side Park.
So moved.
Second.
Proper move and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item pass.
Resolutions held over. 01-848, authorize agreement with Twin City Security for unarmed guard services at various city facilities. 08-849, approve item-based bid for street sweeper brooms and mandrills. 08-853 and 854 are approving purchase orders to Long Lewis Ford of the Shoals for Ford Bronco Sport and Ford Cargo Vans. 08-856, approve purchaser to Stivers Ford Lincoln for three Ford pickup trucks and one Ford Explorer. 21-16861, authorize contract with Asphalt Services for downtown street optimization, resurfacing, and striping. 21-862, authorize contract with McElhaney Construction for downtown street optimization, removal of traffic signals. 21-863, authorize contract with Southern View Media for digital marketing and design services for public safety candidate recruiting. And 68-65, authorize settlement agreement and release of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Proper move and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes.
37-864, consider the application of Katan Ahmed for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a shuttle service.
Move the table.
Second.
Proper move and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item table.
Consent resolution is being introduced. 21-874 through 09-890.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second. Proper move and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived. Madam Clerk?
21-874, 875, and 876 are authorizing contracts with Alicia Anne Simon, Xenia Calhoun, and Jessica Richardson, Logan Pizant, Cameron Pizant, LaSheryl Dodd, Shelby Collins, and Christopher Wright to serve as election specialist and absentee election supervisor for the 2025 municipal election. 58-877, authorize removal of weeds, group 1664. 68-78, approve award of special bonus to the Firefighter of the Month. 68-79, 880, 881, and 882 are determining appropriations to inspire you, St. Francis Xavier Catholic Church, and lifelines, counseling services, serve a public purpose, and approve payment. 09-890, transfer funds from the mayor's general fund discretionary account to Mobile Parks and Recreation, Heroes Park, and declare said transfer serves a public purpose.
So moved.
Second.
Proper move and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes.
Resolution is being introduced. 01-883 through 08-888.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of resolutions 08-886 and 08-887, with the rest being laid over for one week.
Second. Proper move and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived. Madam Clerk?
08-886, approved purchase order to DLX Enterprises for water rescue dry suits for Mobile Fire Rescue Department, $21,945. 08-887, approved purchase order to Port City Industrial for replacement roll-up door for Convention Center, $22,350.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Proper move and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes.
Call for public hearings. 41-889, call for public hearing to consider the application of India Bracy for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a sedan service, scheduled for July 8th.
So moved.
Second.
Proper move and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings called.
Announcements.
District 2, Councilman Carroll.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. We just passed the street optimization plan for downtown, which changes several streets from one-way to two-way. There was some discussion this morning as to the avail of the streets and the width and maybe a little bit of traffic congestion that would be caused when they were done that way. There was also some concern from businesses and residences as to would they be able to park on the street and do it comfortably with traffic coming both ways. We passed this today with the intent of making streets more comfortable, making them slower, making them walkable and safe, and also safe. We have talked to the administration, or I have talked to the administration and asked the administration and the engineers involved to reach out again, along with the alliance to several of the residents and the business owners, to make sure that there's anything that we need to tweak during the process, that we can make those tweaks happen while we're in the construction process, so it accommodates the business or do what we can for the, for the best of the business. Secondly, tomorrow at 10:00 AM, in front of Mount Gillit on Congress Street, we will have the groundbreaking of the first home that is part of the housing improvement plan for the city. And as I've told everyone over the last two years, now this is a major step for the city in affordable housing. This program that was instituted by myself and with the help of the administration and everyone else, actually helps us to cut through the red tape of federal monies and HUD. It actually helps us build homes faster. It actually helps us reach not just the 80% of AMI, but also 120% of AMI. It gives the opportunity for generational wealth and actually true homeownership. These aren't rental properties. This is an opportunity for a family to actually own a home and actually grow their family in a home. So tomorrow at 10:00 AM, in front of Mount Gillit on Congress Street, we will be breaking ground, and I'd like to invite all of you there to join us in this occasion. This is the first type of housing project actually in the county and also in the state of Alabama. So it's a big move for the city of Mobile. So, it's a big move for the city of Mobile, and it's a big move for us to move forward with affordable housing, especially in neighborhood revitalization. Thank you, Mr. President.
Congratulations, Councilman Carroll.
Thank you.
District 6, Councilman Woods.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to point out, one of the major projects, I guess over the last two CIP budgets, has been addressing the issues at West Side Ballpark for years and years. Long story made short, years and years, West Side was kind of in limbo as far as county park, city park, and now it is a city park. Over the past two cycles, really poured into that and brought it up to speed. And I just want to say thank you to Parks and Rec and the project manager and everybody that's been involved in executing this whole entire redo for the most part of West Side. The improvement's been greatly appreciated, even so much so that the state nine U All-Star Tournament is being held this weekend at, at West Side. So, thank you again. West Side is very appreciative, and it's definitely making West Side a jewel out in District 6. So, I just want to say that the most recent here that we approved today is just addressing the lights. Repaving's done, parking lights are done, addressing the lights on the field, which is a safety concern, is going into play. So, definitely appreciate all the work that's been put into, to making this a reality. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Congratulations, Councilman Woods. This assist has another part. You can join the rest of us now.
It makes two.
District 1, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to attend the Fourth Annual Miss June America Scholarship Pageant Program brunch, and it was amazing to see the young ladies, the speakers. It was just a beautiful event, so I want to thank everyone that made that happen. And then also, I had the opportunity to attend the Youth on the Windside Youth Forum. So, it was young people that came, came together and wanted to discuss the issues in the city. They created a plan, I was there to be present to answer any questions. It's actually on social media, and my desire is to take their ideas and figure out ways that I can work with them to make that happen. And so, and that's why I created Combo with Core. Can Maya, can you stand up? Can we make some noise for Maya? She's the first, first student that's a part of Combo with Core. We started, and, and so that's something that we will be going forward. She started today, and so if you know any young people that would like to be a part of Combo with Core, this is an opportunity for them to learn about government, leadership, and just making a difference in their community. On June 28th, we will have our Community Career Fair at the Dodge Community Center from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., so come out. If you know anyone that's looking for a job or opportunities, this is not just a District 1 thing, this is a city of Mobile thing as well. So, invite everyone out from 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p, I mean, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And then, yeah, it's great things happening in District 1. And then, on June 29th, we're going to continue this progress. We have been seeing so many things take place in our city, and it's time for us to work together. And so, we will have a community prayer walk and talk, and, but it's not just praying, we ask, is asking 1,000 men, 1,000 women to be mentors in our community, just like I started Combo with Core, you could be a part of the solution. And so, we're asking everybody to come out on June 29th from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. We're going to be praying for our community, talking about things that we can work together, but also committing to serving our young people. And then, I also would like to say that we also, in August, we will have the Cover Your Community, that's an opportunity for people in District 1 to apply for, if your roof having any issues, that you can apply for funding for that, and it's called Cover Your Community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Should have hit the buzzer on you. District 5, Councilman Davis. District 4, Councilman Renna. District 7, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, I joined Mobile County Commissioner Mysteria Ludgood at the Women's Forum for the Distinguished Young Women. It was a breakfast where we were asked to come to speak about community service, how to give back in the community, and we joined some other businesswomen from around the city to do that. The participants are terrific, they asked a lot of really good questions, it makes us all have to think about those answers. So, a really good opportunity for those of us in the business world and in politics to talk about community service. Of course, this is the second week that the Distinguished Young Women have been in the city. They will have finals on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Saturday, of course, is when the winner will be announced. And for those of you who don't know, Mobile's own Alabama representative is Shayla Holloway, so she will be participating. So, it will be a wonderful event on Saturday at the Sanger. It begins at 7:00 o'clock, but I would urge you to get there early, because it's always a big crowd for, for the Saturday night finals, and that's all from District 7.
Thank you, Vice President, and greetings to the citizens of District 3. First, I would like to stand congratulation to Sun Trees Manor, Manor Foundation. They had their Fourth Annual Juneteenth Pageant at the Battle House Hotel on this past Saturday. It was very educational and very rewarding for the many young ladies that have participated, and congratulations to all the participants on the Fourth Annual Juneteenth Pageant. Again, great program last weekend. And also, this coming Thursday, State Representative Barbara Drummond and myself, we are having our annual Chattering Chute, which will be held at the Gulf Quest Museum. We have extended the invitation out to all our seniors throughout District 3 and State House Representative 103, and it's something that we do every year, we have a senior town hall meeting where we invite the seniors for a luncheon and sit down and talk to them and have plenty of food, fun, and games. And again, that will be this coming Thursday. The deadline was this past Friday, no, it's past Thursday, but I believe that we have room for five more seats. Are you interested, please dial as soon as possible, 251-208-5480. Again, this is our annual Chattering Chute for our seniors in our district, and you must live in District 3 or State House Representative 103, okay? Anything from the administration? All right.
Mr. President?
Mr. Penn? We also have two other interns that are here that are students. Can y'all stand up as well? And let's make some noise for them as well. Thank y'all so much for, one, graduated from the best high school in the world, and y'all already know what high school that is. Go Rattlers, that's right, LaFlore, and then we have a South Alabama student as well, and so, go Jags.
Another discussion?
Motion to adjourn.
Proper moving, proper moving second in the discussion.